Good evening. Welcome to the Village Board Meeting, the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Wednesday, April 5th, an unusual day for us to have a meeting, but it is a special scheduled event for us to have the public hearing on our proposed budget for fiscal year 2017 and 2018. Our fiscal year ends May 31 and begins June 1, and so the budget that we're discussing tonight would take effect in June 1. According to the state law, that gets posted in draft form as Patty Dwyer did in March. You can go to pleasantville-ny.gov and you'll find on the front page in news a link that will jump you into all of the backup on the budget if you would like to dig into any part of it. It's all up there at pleasantville-ny.gov, and I encourage you to take a look. Patty Dwyer, our village administrator, will lead us through PowerPoint which sadly does not include the annual appearance of the animated GIF of the swimmer because the swim, the pool fund has been folded into the general fund for administrative reasons.
Has there been a decision?
These are the things that one starts to look for year after year. So, at any rate, the short version of the story that Patty will give you in more detail is that our proposed general fund budget is $15,653,536 funded by a tax levy of $10,561,000 that balance other forms of revenue, and when you add together all of our various funds, including the water fund sanitation, et cetera, our tentative total grand, but grand total budget is $22,788.66. Perhaps the most important news for all of you is that the proposed tax rate is a .56% increase. And again, recognize that one of the reasons for this public hearing is that it's a tentative budget. The Village Board will be meeting with the various department heads and with Patty, with Mary Schwartz and Noreen Regan, our treasurer and deputy treasurer, who are central to this whole process, and at the point at which we adopt the budget towards the end of this month, it may be that there have been some changes one way or another. Take it away, Patty Dwyer.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, members of the Board of Trustees and our esteemed department heads that are here tonight.
Let me just flip the light off still.
Yes, it's my pleasure to present the village's tentative budget for fiscal year 2017-18. And as Mayor Scherer mentioned, there are several places where people can get more detail with respect to this budget. Tonight, I am going to do what I consider to be a high-level executive summary that will walk through the budget in terms of its components, talk a little bit about how the budget is assembled, and also shed some light on our fiscal condition. The first screen up here is basically our homepage of our new website, and there are several places on this website people can go to get information about the village's financial condition. Under quick links, if you use this link for financial data, it will bring you to one of our external sites called OpenGov. And this is a really interesting and, I think, valuable site for reference where we have data that goes back to 2014-15, all the way to the tentative budget. So one could see, you know, in terms of our categories of expenses and revenues, a lot of detail on this site. This essentially is a pie chart of the existing general fund budget, but you can use this as an opportunity to drill down by department and look at other components of those particular expenses. For example, I just hit the recreation budget, and it breaks down all of the elements of that particular budget. And again, there's more detail in each one of those lines. So, I like this site. We update this regularly. In addition to the tentative budget, which you can find on the site, you can also find year-to-date figures and historical data from other fiscal years. We also have on here, under filters, our audit report, as well as our assessment rolls. So, there's a tremendous amount of data available on OpenGov as a resource. The budget's also available on the department page for the finance department, so that's another link if people are interested in getting into the line item budget. But this evening, I am going to present, I believe for the last time, Mr. Mayor, my famous PowerPoint budget.
You've claimed that.
That deals with, that deals with the village's operational needs for the upcoming fiscal year. So, without further ado, this is a brand-new computer with a new program. Let me just put this in PowerPoint form. Okay, very good. Okay, as the mayor mentioned, the public hearing is required by law to be held prior to the 15th of April every year, and it must be adopted by the 1st of May. It doesn't give us a very big window of opportunity to work on the budget as an exercise, and it usually follows that after the village's election cycle, there are new members of the board that need to be brought up to speed very quickly. Fortunately for us, you know, we are going to be able to do that in the next couple of weeks to present the department's budgets to the board at a work session on the 17th and again on the 24th, so we can have the opportunity for questions to be asked on that level of detail. But tonight, just to give a general fund overview, a fund overview of all funds, our fiscal cycle is June 1 through May 31. Our taxable status date is January 1st. That is the date the assessor is required to start developing an assessment role upon which the taxes for this budget would be levied. The tentative budget is filed with the village clerk on the 20th of March, and then following the final assessment role, we set a public hearing, which we're holding tonight. The budget calls for appropriations in the general fund of $15,653,536. In the water fund, $4,082,577. In the refuse fund, $1,113,373. And as we mentioned earlier, the pool fund is now a component in the general fund. And the debt service fund, which is basically a repository fund, is holding $1,919,180 for payments of principal and interest on our debts. With respect to revenue, the revenue sources will be gone over in detail tonight. The general fund receives most of its revenue through taxes, the water fund through water rents, debt service through appropriations from all of the funds to pay principal and interest on outstanding debt. And the refuse fund as well is financed primarily through the collection of the unit taxes, which are imposed on residential properties. So this slide shows the general fund in a nutshell. The budget is proposed to be supported by a tax levy of $10,561, I'm sorry, $10,561,530. We intend to use surplus from fund balance of $350,000. And other revenue sources such as fees and charges, permits, operating revenue of $4,742,006 will support the budget. The assessment role, the final role that was filed this week, shows assessed valuation of $114,728,298. The resultant tax rate is $92.05 with a tax rate increase of a little more than half of 1%. This budget as presented will result in an operating surplus remaining at the beginning of the fiscal year, June 1, 2017. We're projecting that surplus now to be approximately $3.4 million. That surplus will be slightly higher than the start of year for 2017, so we're actually, 2016, so we're actually going to end up this year in a better position than we started the year with. That's all very good news. We are subjected to tax cap compliance. This is a result of 2011 legislation that compelled all municipalities and school districts to cap their tax levy increases by 2% or the rate of inflation, whichever is less. The budget as presented this evening complies in all respects with the tax cap that's in effect, so we will once again be presenting to the community a tax compliant, tax cap compliant budget. So I'm going to go into the elements that support the general fund. These are broken up into categories of expense that are primarily established by the state comptroller's office. It's impossible to be creative with the budget. Everything is pretty much designed for us, the titles of these accounts, the numbering of these accounts, and where they fall with respect to the budget themselves. It's all set up like the old Dewey Decimal System used to be in a library. So, the first component in a general fund budget is called government support, and in that section of the budget, we fund the operations for the mayor and board of trustees, for the justice court, for administration, which is essentially the clerk in my office, the finance department, retain services, which are services that we acquire third-party from auditors, attorneys, engineers, and the like. We also budget our information technology budget in this area of the general fund. We budget for village hall, all the assets here, for maintenance, for repair, and furniture and the like. We budget general municipal insurance in this category of expense, small claims expenditures, as well as small tax surciaries, and we also have a contingency appropriation. In the aggregate, this component is $1,624,028. I'm going to show you how that breaks down. For those who are interested in seeing the details of that number, the largest expenses go to administration, $301,835, and finance, $197,395 in administrative expense, $190,170 for justice court, and then the others are trailing. The second category of expenses is called public safety, and in that area of the budget, we fund the building department as well as the police department. We also fund traffic enforcement and crossing guards. The total appropriations for public safety are $3,710,646. The police uniform division is the largest expense in that category of expense, $2,255,650. That is for the entire complement of uniformed police officers excluding the detectives division and the chief and the lieutenants. They are budgeted in police administration. Public works is the third significant category of expenses in the general fund budget. In the public works budget, we account for the administration of the Department of Public Works, money for road maintenance, snow removal, street lights, and street repair, metered parking and parking lots, and general buildings and grounds maintenance. The total appropriations for the Department of Public Works is $1,641,900, I'm sorry, With a considerable amount of money going toward street maintenance, $868,810, and the balance going to central garage, snow removal, street admin, and street lighting. I would like to note that there has been a considerable amount of money saved this year in street lighting due to an aggressive effort to replace those older mercury vapors and metal halide lighting with LED lights. So, my compliments go to our superintendent of public works, who very, very seriously took his new title as energy czar to a high level and has done a great job in converting every light bulb he could find between village hall and DPW, so I thank you for that. We also had a very good year with snow removal. As people know, that last blizzard was very intense and a very difficult storm, but we have an extraordinary crew here that takes their jobs very seriously, and I think we were very happy to see that effort, you know, at this point in time be behind them. So, the general fund continues with a category called outreach services. This is for our Clinton Street Center, where we support the nutrition programs, the senior activities, and the nutrition and recreation programs for older adults. The total appropriations for the Clinton Street Center, $482,965. Shows a little detail here as to what portions go to nutrition, $143,430. Clinton Street Center, $307,745, and the balance for transportation. Moving on to recreation and library, this little GIF is still there, Mayor, she's still that one? We'll call her Mindy, how's that? But don't tell her. I hope she's watching tonight. Okay, so recreation and library is, has been changed from previous years. We now have the pool as part of this budget, so there's about $257,000 in this budget that's over last year's appropriations simply because we folded the pool fund into this particular area of the general fund budget. But in addition to our recreation programs, we also pay our portion of our library share with the town of Mount Pleasant in this budget, so I'll break that down for you. And we also have the new program, the Panther Club, which had added about 100 and almost $200,000 in expense to our budget, but we have seen offsetting revenue. So, just so you could get a sense of why the budget is higher in terms of appropriations than previous years. So, the recreation department budget, the library expenses are $890,740. Thirty-four percent of this budget that's presented tonight is really pass-through money that goes out to the library. The Panther Club, again, $197,806, that's a new program, and the pool is coming in at $230,000. And I believe the swim club is in here for another, I think, $27,000 grouped into this detail. Again, some of this detail where it says more items, that can be found on OpenGov if people are interested in getting into the numbers at that level. Okay, community services, this is one of the last categories of expense in the general fund. This is where we aggregate the expenses for some of our boards and commissions such as the planning board, zoning board, ARB, business support council, beautification committee, PCTV. Also, things like sanitary and storm sewers and street trees are budgeted in this particular area of the budget. The total appropriations here are $344,150. As I think most of you know, the boards are volunteer boards, so there's a considerable amount of savings there, and those expenses are really just ministerial expenses related to those boards, perhaps for planning consultants, legal consultants, and the like. So as part of that budget, you'll see leaf collection, $48,000, street cleaning, $34,000, sanitary sewers, $32,000, storm sewers, $32,000, and then lesser amounts for some of the committees. Okay, in the back of the book, as we call it, there are employee benefits. One of the problems with this type of accounting, it doesn't really give you a good sense from a cost accounting perspective on what actual costs are for people and resources. Things are segregated, but because of the way we need to present the budget, employee benefits fall in the back of the book. They do not go in individual accounts such as those that deal with the salaries of employees. So, this is an aggregate accounting of all of the benefit costs for the general fund, for pension contributions, social security for wages, Medicare, workers' compensation insurance, unemployment insurance, and health insurance, $4,063,515. With respect to the detail, hospitalization medical insurance is 50% of that budget at The police and fire retirement system contributions are estimated at $700,000. The employee state retirement system, $440,000. Social security wages, $420,000. Workers' compensation, $224,000, and the others are trailing behind, just to give you a good macro overview. Okay, and then finally, debt service payments. This is the area of the budget where we budget principal and interest payments for long-term borrowing that has taken place. Anything that has a life of over five years based on what the state determines is the period of probable usefulness for, and a capital expense can be borrowed for instead of purchased outright. So over time, the village has borrowed for improvements to facilities, for large pieces of equipment, and anything that was considered to be a capital asset. This year, our principal and interest payments on long-term debt is $927,832. That is down substantially from prior years as we have come into a condition in our debt deficit cycle where we are paying a lot less in principal and interest than we've paid in prior years. So, that's all good news. That gives us opportunities to look at future capital needs and to discuss whether or not we can move forward with some capital planning in order to absorb additional expenses that those types of projects would result in. In this budget, we have budgeted as interfund transfers, $150,000 for road resurfacing and $50,000 towards sidewalk programs and sidewalk repair. We made a commitment last year to do this every year for five years as part of the operating budget, so those numbers are in our existing operating budget. I am also recommending from the general funds, fund balance, a transfer to reserve for capital expenses. I'm suggesting a half million dollars. I think when we have our discussion about where we are going with our capital plan, the board may want to consider even funding a little more money for capital reserves. That money would be used anytime the board of trustees would feel that there was an expense that should be made with cash rather than borrowing, or perhaps for any type of opportunity to do some economic development projects that could end up being a long-term capital project down the road. So for capital assets, for equipment purchasing, or for buildings, for the like, it's, the budget presents itself with an opportunity to start reserving some cash so we do not have to fall back into a situation of a heavier debt burden on the operating budget. With respect to capital projects, we have a number of transportation improvement projects in the pipeline. We had an opportunity to discuss some of them with the board just last week. In addition to those that we are looking at on Tompkins Avenue and Vermilee and Cooley and Manville, Washington Avenue, we're hoping that the state transportation enhancement program that we submitted grants for back in September, October yields some results in the next few weeks. We should know whether or not we're going to be able to work with the proceeds of those grant applications. And if we do, we have to revisit our capital program and decide how we're going to fund our share of those projects. But as you recall, back in September, we submitted two applications, one for Washington Avenue for improvements for some streetscape improvements, new sidewalk, new landscaping, some other type of traffic improvements, and then on Manville Road, similarly, new center medians on Manville Road, better sidewalk access on intersections and corners, and general improvements to the north end of Memorial Plaza. So, if we're successful, we've committed to about a million dollars in matching funds for those grants that we will have to talk about how we're going to support that effort, and the balance of the money would come from the federal program. So, that's pretty exciting. You know, I think we have a pretty good chance of seeing those things through. We believe that they are all very good transportation enhancements, particularly in the areas where we're going to see some growth and development, and we're going to see a lot more activity downtown, and perhaps a lot more with respect to some housing and the like in the downtown area. This basically shows again where the money's going for principal and interest payments and interfund transfers for the current budget. So, where do we get the money to pay for all of this? The general fund is supported predominantly through property taxes and something called pass-through taxes, which are basically taxes that we are able to attach to things like gas and electric services in the village, franchise fees and the like, sales taxes that we share with the county. We also get a substantial amount of money from operating revenue. We don't get a lot of money from state and federal aid, but because we get some, we have to note it. And we also use some fund balances, I mentioned, to try to close the gap between what we're suggesting we should appropriate and what we need to raise in revenue so we don't have to raise taxes to meet that gap. So real property taxes under this budget will be $10,624,605. The tax cap levy set a maximum, $172,000 over the previous year's tax levy, and we are within that, we're within that cap. The non-property taxes of 1.2 million are essentially sales tax contributions coming from a sales tax agreement through Westchester County. We also expect to receive about $315,000 in fines and forfeitures, about half million dollars in revenue related to transportation, another looks like $183,000 in state aid sources, and very little federal aid if any, although we will be getting money in for the Pleasantville Strong grant, and when that does come in, we will book that as revenue. Okay, that essentially is a very high-level summary of the general fund's category of expenses and its revenue sources. Because this is fund accounting, we do have to segregate some of our activity according to the benefited users. The refuse fund is one of those funds that we separate from the general fund because we do not provide refuse services for everybody. We do not pick up commercial trash in the village, so because we don't do that, we can't tax for it as a general tax. We have to separate it. So we separate it by creating this residential sanitation service, and we assess residential properties by a unit basis for trash collection. And in addition to trash, we pick up recyclables, bulk items, brush and yard waste. The budget is just in excess of a million dollars. The rate for a single-family house, the annual rate for sanitation services is going to be $454.26 under the proposed budget. It's going up less than a dollar from last year. So, that's all very good news. That is due in part to people's recycling efforts. The more people recycle, the better it is for all of us because we pay a lot less in fees for refuse disposal. So, in addition to that good news that we're able to maintain those costs and a high level of service in the refuse fund, the fund does have a surplus. We're projecting it to be about $281,000 at the end of the year. We're projecting it to be about two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars at the end of the year. Okay, moving on to the water fund. This is another one of those funds where we separate the revenue that comes in from other revenues received. The water fund gets its revenue from water rent, and water is sold to consumers both in the village and outside of the village. Our water, as most people know by now, is highly, it's filtered water. It's very, very well, yeah, I'm sorry. It's just once in a while you just get a mental block. Our water comes from New York City. It's a raw water source that's treated at the Millwood Water Treatment Facility. Our water is treated to a high level of standards that meet or exceed federal drinking water standards. We maintain our own distribution system here in Pleasantville. We have storage tanks as well as over eighteen miles of water mains in the streets. And we have a water department that deals with not only the maintenance of our water system, but reading of our meters and testing of our water. Our budget for the water department is a little over four million dollars. That fund as well is also seeing a surplus of eight hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars projected at the end of this year. Our water rates at this time are projected to remain stable for the next fiscal year. We have resident rates as well as non-resident rates and special rates for bulk institutional users. These rates on a per-thousand-cubic-foot basis are expected to stay the same. We are going to be looking at rates that are in effect for sprinkler systems and some of the other larger metered accounts to be sure that they're in line with what we would consider to be conservation measure rates. But we don't, we're not proposing any rates, any rate increases at this point in time for water rates. Okay, taking a macro view of our local economic situation, the village is in a very healthy position financially. Our last audit report had given the board and us a lot of assurances as to the stability of our financial picture. We do have some things, though, as everybody does, that concern us. We are keeping an eye on searchiaries that are pending. We have, as communities our size would, a considerable number of searchiaries that are going to affect commercial properties. We do see, though, in property valuation, an increase in general assessed valuation for the village. This entire region is seeing a resurgence of home sales. We, you know, we're benefiting from that level of activity as well. We think our local economy is very healthy. We're hearing it from people who have their boots on the ground, so to speak, and we're very fortunate to be in a very good position to, you know, to speak to that. We see some stability coming from pension and healthcare obligations, although on the federal level, if things do change with respect to some of the obligations under the Affordable Care Act, we may be exposed again to that Cadillac tax situation that we have been watching for the last couple of years. But right now, our budget is expecting, I believe, a ten, up to an eight to ten percent increase in healthcare costs while pension costs have actually stabilized. So that is, that's been a little bit of a relief. We just enacted new fiscal policies which address some of the things that we've been doing with respect to reserves and fund balance preservation. This budget is responsive to that. It complies in almost all respects to the fiscal policies. I think where it may not is in the area of contingency financing, but I'm going to look at that. We may want to put a little extra contingency in the general fund, which is just a matter of discussion for our next work session. With respect to collective bargaining, I still have an open issue with CSEA. I think we have negotiated in good faith since late winter. We are very close to reaching an agreement, and hopefully, that collective bargaining agreement will be settled within the next month, and we will go into our next fiscal year knowing with hard numbers where we're going to be with respect to that particular group. And as you know, we've been consumed working on our master plan update last year. We did a very good job working with the community on coming up with some new initiatives for downtown A1 planning. We are now in our second phase of that effort where we are going to be looking at an implementation strategy by enacting new zoning. That will result in, hopefully, you know, some opportunities for some redevelopment in and around the A1 district. So we'll be keeping our eye on what that means with respect to service provisions and the types of things that we'd have to respond to. With respect to growth and development comes a whole bunch of responsibilities for public services such as police, fire, sanitation, and the like. So we're, you know, we're looking at that very critically, and we'll be able to speak to that as we see some opportunities arise. We're continuing on our efforts, you know, to the extent we can to maintain our role in, as public officials, to be responsive to the environment and environmental issues that affect our community. We take our role as stewards very seriously. We are looking into more green initiatives. We just recently purchased those leaf vehicles. We did get one delivered already, so I'm very excited about that. Also, from the point of view of sustainability, you know, we are very careful about looking at our obligations to maintain our workplaces in a manner that they are recycling and dealing with energy efficiencies. And finally, civic space improvements. We are continuing our efforts to improve public spaces in and around the downtown. I've met with the beautification committee on several occasions. We're working on new sign plans for downtown. We're working on new street furniture. We have some ideas with how we're going to deal with some pedestrian wayfinding in the downtown. All of these things are tying in very nicely to what we think are going to be some of the initiatives coming out of the master plan with respect to downtown civic space. So I'll close by saying that, you know, the operating budget is presented. I think it's going to be a very efficient and sound vehicle for us to use for the next fiscal year. I think the staff have done an amazing job in looking not only at what all of us believed were the goals and objectives of the village board, to maintain services, but to do it in an efficient and an effective manner, but also being really smart and responsive to what they thought would be sustainable. So where we knew we could cut a little bit in this budget, you know, we're going to have discussions with the board about why we think we should leave some things in there. And if we think that when we get together, there may be an opportunity to ask you to add a little more here and there because it may just be opportunistic to do that, we may have that discussion as well. But we think this is a workable product. We think it reflects what our priorities in this village. It has, you know, been responding to the community's needs with respect to new recreation programs, new things for downtown, new capital investments in streets and sidewalks. So, you know, we're delighted to, you know, to be able to have this opportunity to present it, to take any comments that the board may have about it, and then to leave it open for public view. We would suggest that, in accordance with the schedule set by village law, that if we could put this up for adoption, it would be on our meeting on April twenty, is it the seventh, the last Monday?
Yes.
April twenty-seventh would be, you know, I believe, a good time to present it for adoption for the board. So I'll close with that. Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me present this budget. And I also, again, want to thank my, my staff that attended this evening, Treasurer Mary Schwartz, Deputy Treasurer Noreen Regan, Jeff Conum, Superintendent of Public Works, and of course Judy, who has to attend, Judy Warentown, Village Clerk.
But she would anyway.
I want to thank all of you for, you know, helping me put this budget together and for the advice and guidance that you give me throughout the year on this effort. It's a tremendous responsibility to present the municipal budget. I take it very seriously, so does everyone, you know, who works for the village. And, you know, we hope that, again, this one serves us well. So thank you.
Thank you for that, Patty. A bunch of things to say. As Patty alluded at the outset, this is rumored to be the last budget presentation she will make because she is planning to retire in somewhat less than a year. So assuming she makes good on that, and it's not just an urban myth, we will be undertaking in the next few months the business of thinking about how to fill some pretty large shoes. So thank you so much for this, Patty. And thank you, Mary and Noreen. I know how much work goes into all of this. And thanks to the entire staff and certainly all the department heads for the serial good news that comes out of this budget, especially the positive results of operations that have left us in a strong position to start thinking about some of these opportunities, as Patty outlone. So I just had a couple of things I want to reinforce. One was, as Patty mentioned, we have in this budget a five-hundred-thousand-dollar item to fund our capital account when we established some fiscal policies some years back and have renewed them every year, this year with a few tweaks. We established the goal of moving the village from the habit of bonding for most everything that had a long-term life to trying to move to an environment where we would plan in advance, fund a capital account, and be able to pay for smaller but long-term items out of cash than, for example, roofs and some trucks and the like. Obviously, when you end up looking at a water main project for seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or a million dollars, those are the kinds of things that can and should be bonded, not only because it's a big hit to take in a given year, but because those are items that benefit the community for a long time and the tax impact of purchasing them is borne over a long period of time as well. So when we established the idea of trying to fund that capital account, that coincided with a number of bad pieces of news. One, which was the economic downturn that we were emerging from at the time, but the other was the arrival of the tax cap, which although we can and in one year did override that tax cap, establishes the goal of not increasing the tax levy by more than two percent or the rate of inflation whichever is lower. And then, of course, even that, in state speak, turns into a much more complicated spreadsheet that Mary and her team have to go through to figure out what the hell the thing really means, the result of which is both the village and school district and all government entities in New York have been operating in an extremely limited environment, especially at a time when for several years running pension funds were, pension costs were going up quickly, and healthcare costs are obviously highly variable. And some years, we were able to raise in the tax levy only, what, sixty, seventy thousand dollars more in some years, which was completely consumed by increases in areas that we have no control over. So the good news about that is some of those forces have eased. The tax cap remains, not the subject for tonight, but I think the tax cap is both ill-written and ill-understood. Frustrates me annually that the state crows that it stays within the tax cap, even though they're not actually covered by their own law. But when they say they're within the tax cap, they mean two percent. They don't mean the percentage that trickles down to us, you know, point three-eight, point seven-two, whatever. So it turns out, as is the case in so many circumstances, the rules are different depending on who they apply to. So at any rate, long story short, you sit in front of five people, and every person who's ever sat at this table has the same goal all of us have, which is to maintain this fine community as cost-efficiently as we can. And nobody wants to spend a dime we don't have to. So happy good news that we've been successful this year, not only in living within the plan that was adopted, but in some cases exceeding it, and in part also the result of some increased revenues. We've had a very busy time in the building department, and therefore, building permit fees and the like have been coming quickly. Which is a nice segue to the point that I think not everybody realizes, and that is that in a given year, we establish a budget like this and establish a tax levy, in this case proposed to be about ten point five million dollars. That's the amount of money we will raise by taxing residents and commercial property owners. When a new project is built and we have a new tax ratable, those people obviously are taxed as well. We don't generate any more money. We're still generating the same ten point five million dollars, but the pie is sliced up a little bit differently. So if you have nine people who have to pay ten dollars, they're each paying, what, a dollar eleven? If you bring in a tenth person, each person is now only paying a dollar. Likewise, if we have a tax cert, as Patty alluded, and someone is successful in reducing their assessment, what it means is everybody else pays a little bit more because the pie is reapportioned. So folks sometimes don't realize that the arrival of new ratables, for example, all the work we see going on in the village, the construction of the Toll Brothers Project sixty-eight townhomes. Happy to report, we heard this week, the first one has actually sold and is now occupied by an owner, the first of sixty-eight, which look to be moving along quickly. We have that project. We have the project that you have seen going up at the corner of Edgewood and Washington on the former Maher Funeral Home site. You will see very shortly the project at the old Try and Buy site with the demolition of that building and a new building going up that will incorporate retail on the first floor and two floors of apartments above. The old Pizza Hut building has been demolished and being rebuilt as a building with offices above a retail or restaurant space. All kinds of good stuff going on, all kinds of new players coming into Pleasantville, mostly drawn here by the same reasons that drew all of us here. And they'll help put a shoulder behind the wheel of making this all work. So what that means is not that we'll raise any more money. We only need as much as we need to run the village, but that with increased ratables, you have the potential to see some relief from the inexorable increases. Obviously, there are all kinds of things that can happen that flip it the other way, and we have been blindsided a few times over the years by crazy stuff like huge and really unmanageable spikes in pension costs and the like. It does look like we're in for a period where we're in a little bit more stable position from the standpoint of external forces, but who the hell knows? That's obviously, the world of Washington has the potential to have a big impact on states, particularly a state like New York. Some billions of dollars in the state budget depend on federal monies that appear at least potentially to be at risk. And we've also heard floated ideas like eliminating the tax deductibility of local property taxes from one's taxes, which obviously in an area like Westchester County where taxes are high and the tax deductibility of those against your federal income tax are, in many cases, the rules that make it possible for people to live here. So if that were to be changed, that would be a very significant impact on everybody. So obviously, we're watching all of that. Who can determine what that all means? But certainly happy news that I think this year, our overall tax assessment roll went up by, what, about a million dollars in assessed value, which is substantially more than that in real value. So all the work that all the folks who live around Pleasantville have been doing to their homes, additions, reconstructions, new kitchens, all of those things help in little ways to improve the village tax assessment role. But these big things, like the arrival of the project on Washington Avenue for Toll Brothers, represent the biggest shot in the arm for the tax base since probably the Country Club, which was built, give or take, thirty years ago. So that's all good news, and it is a happy circumstance for all of us to hear this report that we're in stable conditions and that that will give us the opportunity to think and perhaps make some quicker progress than we once thought we could make in rethinking the way the village budget works, particularly in the area of capital expense and debt service. So I don't mean to suggest that it's all rainbows and no rain because there certainly are plenty of risks out there. And we're, as Jeff Conum knows only too well, only a phone call away from hearing that something has happened underground or above ground that has the potential to cost us quite a bit of money. And what we need to realize, I think all of us, is that a community this size, an unexpected expense of fifty or seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollars can have a very... expense of 50 or 75 or 100,000 can have a very big impact on our annual budget, even though in the overall scheme of things in a grand total of 22 million dollars or so all funds together, doesn't sound like all that much money. So, good stuff happening and kudos to you, Patty, to Mary and Noreen, to all our department heads and to all the folks that support, all of you got a bunch of good people trying to make this train run. So...
Thank, thank you, absolutely. You know, and I can't even begin to explain the detail behind this budget because it would, we'd be here for a very long time. And the methodical work that gets done to try to account for known expenses and then the forecasting we have to do to make sure that we know that we, you know, that we're, we're comfortable and confident with the numbers that we're giving the board. All of that comes from institutional knowledge, you know, having a very sophisticated staff and having the talent that I have to work with. So, I'm, you know, I couldn't be a luckier person. So, thank you all again.
And, and worth pointing out, as you did at the outset, that this new link you have established to feed our data into OpenGov, again, in that link that's available on the finance tab, is not only a tool for all of us in thinking about the budget and managing it towards the future, but a great resource for members of the public. Obviously, going through the budget line by line as we look forward to in the coming days is not everybody's cup of tea, as my wife and kids remind me repeatedly. But there is an opportunity for folks to get a really good overview and to dig into more detail as they're interested at, at the OpenGov site. And the capacity to look at trends over time is also a great resource that makes that data not only transparent to folks who might be interested, but very helpful to us as a planning tool as well. So, creeping into the 21st century, that was a big leap. So, thank you for that, Patty.
And I just pulled up from OpenGov the line item details so people can see that even...
So, Pleasantville-ny.gov is our website and, and that link Patty was what, on the left-hand column in the finance page?
Yes, it's right, right under quick links.
Right.
On the homepage.
There are also some interesting documents available on the State Controller's site and maybe I'll send you those links Patty and we can post them as well. The, as Patty mentioned, the chart of accounts is, that we have to use, is statewide. And part of the idea of that is that it theoretically makes it possible to make comparisons between communities that you might like to benchmark yourself against. I caution everybody that the way costs are allocated in any given community may not always be exactly the same, but nonetheless, certainly in a, at a sort of 50,000-foot level, it's an interesting comparison. And the State Controller's Office issues reports, particularly their reports about fiscal stress levels that pull out benchmarks for communities across the entire state and make it possible for us and you to have a sense of how we fit into the big picture. Again, it's a huge amount of data, but interesting stuff nonetheless. Happy to report that Pleasantville is not on the fiscal stress list and has quite a low fiscal stress score, which I think, as Patty mentioned, does not reflect the fact that the streets are lined with gold. It reflects the fact that we've had this board and, and this staff, just like the boards that preceded us, has bought what we need to buy in order to keep the roof from leaking. And it has never been a community that has sought the gold-plated solution, but it's also been a community that has thought for the long term. So, we inherited that and hope to pass it on, as I think it's fair to say we will, a little bit better than we found it.
And we'll, we'll share the fiscal stress monitoring report. The State Controller just sent it out two weeks ago. It, it ranks communities on a scale from 0 to 29 in terms of the severity of fiscal stress, 0 being absolutely, you know, no indication of stress to 29 being high stress. We scored 0. We're happy to share that report with the board.
Yeah, it's quite an elaborate thing.
Yes.
Tom DiNapoli, the State Controller, has quite a bit of stuff on the website, but he and his staff do a series of serial audits around New York State of school districts, fire district, communities, whatever. Happy to report, as, as we did at the time that it happened, that when Pleasantville's turn came, the folks of the State Controller's Office came here and fairly early in the process realized there wasn't much to find and they left. Instead of sending a letter back that said, you know, "God, you guys are doing a great job," they essentially said, "You guys are doing a great job, but just beware, we're watching. Don't, don't you slip." So, at any rate, I encountered Tom DiNapoli at a New York Conference of Mayors event and I commented to him that it is possible that we could get a little bit of a, a pat on the back for having run a tight ship instead of a letter that says, "All right, it looks okay now, but that doesn't mean it won't look okay tomorrow." And he smiled broadly. His photographer took a picture and I received a portrait in the mail. So, there you have it. Anybody else have comments to make?
Any questions? Yeah, Joe, please.
Thank you, Patty. And Mary and Noreen and everybody for, for what you did. And it's obvious that we're living well within our means, well within our budget, and yet doing a great job. You can see it out, out in the community. But I'm interested in a little bit of an explanation. I think I know the answer and I ask it pretty much every year, but I'm going to ask anyway because I'm kind of concerned, not concerned, interested in this idea of capital planning. And I'm interested in our surplus account and the concept of this capital planning account, which I think is a great idea. I'm glad we're thinking about it and perhaps able to do it. Last year, you appropriated, we appropriated some funds from surplus, and yet this year, at the end of this fiscal year, we're going to have more surplus than we had at the beginning of this fiscal year. Can you kind of explain how that happened? I think it has to do with spending limits, but that's, that's great. And then, looking at that into next year, if we're appropriating 350,000 from surplus and putting 500,000 into a capital reserve, is that where that money is coming from? I mean, I know it's not a dollar-for-dollar thing, but can you kind of talk about that a little bit?
Sure. Current fiscal year, let's talk about that first, where we think we're going to end up and, and why. Expenses will be lower than estimated, probably by 3%. We're usually pretty good at knowing what we need to spend. That's never been the hard part. The hard part is knowing where the money comes from.
Did the revenue come in higher too? Not only, I mean, taxes are taxes, but...
Revenue's coming in higher, yeah. Revenue's coming in higher, as the mayor mentioned. He was right on point with some permits and fees as a result of new development and also revenue from the Panther Club, which was...
We've been expensed with Panther Club too, but obviously the revenue exceeded the expense.
It did.
Our numbers were higher.
Yeah, yes. A lot, lot higher than we had anticipated.
So, even, even the anticipated revenue, it was higher, the actual revenue was higher than anticipated revenue?
We're seeing more in sales tax, a little more in mortgage tax. We're seeing a lot of those economic indicators on a macro level show very positive economic trends where we think we are going to be in a better position next year.
And how much did we budget from surplus last year to the operating budget? This, you know, this current year?
Last year, I think we were looking at 350, no, 375.
And we're using none of it and adding to surplus?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Now, looking forward then...
So, if we draw down, as I was suggesting, taking 325,000 to close the gap for next year's budget from full balance.
Right, anticipated expenses versus anticipated revenues.
Are short about...
We're short 325 to 350,000 and you're appropriating, in the budget, surplus to cover that.
Correct.
And if things go next year as they went this year, we won't spend any of that 350, but we might because it's part of the budget and it's what it is.
That's right. But we have to, we have to by law adopt a balanced budget.
Sure.
Those are the rules. So, in order to balance this budget, because it's calling for more expenses than revenue, we have to use our cash surplus to do that. So, we're recommending we do that instead of raising taxes or cutting programs. Those are your other options.
Does, does that revenue budget, including 350,000 from surplus, does that cover the, an expenditure budget, 500,000 into the capital surplus account? Capital, what did you call it?
It's not, it's not in our operating budget as a transfer out. What, what we're suggesting, that 500,000 will come from the rest of the fund balance that's sitting out there right now, which will be a little over 3.5 million dollars start of the year.
That's in addition to the 350?
We're, we're saying that if we...
We're put, we're, we're allocating to the operating budget?
Yeah, we're saying at the end of this year, we expect to be able to close out the year and start next year with 3.5 million plus in the general fund. And we think that's a very high fund balance to carry. And we're suggesting of that 3.5 million, take a half million and reserve it for capital.
Okay, so here, I guess I'm going to narrow this question down. Let's assume we spend every dollar in the expenditure budget.
Right.
And we get every exact dollar in the revenue budget. So, we take 350 from surplus to cover the, the, the gap.
Right.
Right? And in addition, take 500,000 from surplus and put it into a capital reserve account. So, we will have at the end of that, at the end of this year, if, if it goes exactly according to budget, we will have drawn down off of surplus.
Yes.
We will have drawn down 850,000.
That's correct.
And with whatever's left in surplus, are you comfortable that that is an appropriate amount of surplus to have at the end of the year? Of course, if finances go better and we don't spend all that money, that's great. But are you comfortable that, that amount of surplus, whatever that number is, 2.5 million dollars?
If you've got 20% of operating, I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
It's sufficient for bond raters, if we go back into some capital planning, and it's also sufficient for operational needs should there be any catastrophic events.
I feel, I feel like it's important not to use surplus as a crutch. I don't feel like we are, but I don't want us, over the next year, two years, three years, whatever it is, to start doing that. Other communities have done that and they end up whittling away their surplus to the point where they're, where they're at a dangerously low surplus point, they can't meet their expenses, all of a sudden they're in trouble. And, and it can happen. So, I just want to keep an, I, I personally am going to be, you know, keeping an eye on that, but it sounds like we're, we're in a strong position. The other question I had then with regard to the idea of the capital reserve account, once we put money into capital reserve, are we going to be defining exactly what we can use that money for so that it can't be used in the future by other boards for other things? In other words, whatever those capitals, I understand you want to buy a truck and it's going to cost 40,000, let's pay cash. That's great. Well, we're going to have to develop some, some set of rules that define what we can use that for.
Yes. And in fact, the, the reserve account does that anyway. The State Controller says that those purposes can only be for capital expenses that deal with a period of probable usefulness over five years old or have a certain threshold of, you know, we can set the threshold of, of, you know, expense.
Will the village board in the future be able to draw money out of that for other things and say, "You know what? We don't need all that money in capital surplus, capital reserve. Let's take some out and put it into the, you know, the 2020 budget. Once it's in, it's in."
The reserve can only be spent by an action of the board and typically it's subject to a permissive referendum window, so...
So, it's not an easy thing to do?
It's, it's, it's difficult to do. People can object to that expense. You can have a public hearing on that. But once it's reserved, it's reserved for capital.
Good.
Just like right now, we have a reserve...
It's a good fiscal discipline and...
It is.
And clearly, it's, it's a, an opportunity to take, you know, what has been a perfectly reasonable but longstanding policy of bonding some stuff that if we could fund in advance, we could pay cash for and avoid the debt service expense.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I just don't want to reserve money for capital. And then, you know, in a few years, it's a completely different board and they say, "Hey, look, we have a piggy bank. It's, it's got a million dollars in it. We can use, we can, we can, we can offset, you know, we can offset, you know, throw it into a budget and, 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 you know...
Right.
Undo what we're doing, but we want to do it for a reason. You create, you create, I, I feel like we should be creating a capital reserve plan along with capital plan in, in order to make those things happen over the next, you know, five, 10 years."
I know this is not easy to see, but this is, this is available on the website as part of our documentation for the budget. In the lower section here, it says appropriated fund balance for this particular presentation tonight. You'll see 350,000 just to, to meet our budget and then 500,000 to fund reserves. So, to your point, trustee Stargiati, it's 850,000 in fund balance, you know, that we're recommending come out of this budget.
But of course, if this coming year goes as well as this past year and...
Yes.
Costs are down and revenues are up, we won't spend all that 350. It may or may not happen. We don't know, but we're, we're budgeting for it. Okay.
And the way we're trending now is we're closing out our fiscal year. We think the fund balance is, is looking very positive, even a little better than we're suggesting.
That's true.
So, so far, everything is moving in the right direction.
I just want to clarify something on this. So, just a clarification, we don't, do we move that 500,000 to a standalone account?
Yes.
Or do we just reserve for it? Because I think we had one conversation recently with the, the finance folks where we talked about how it was just really being like in an accounting sense, reserved for, but it didn't go anywhere.
It's encumbered on, you know, it, it is actually booked as a reserve.
I mean, it's not its own bank account.
It doesn't move to its own thing, though. It's sort of ring-fenced, right?
It's classified entirely separately.
Right.
But it's not its own bank account.
Is it carried as a separate line item?
In the fund balance section.
Within the fund balance, but it is still carried on the books of Pleasantville as part of the fund balance?
You'll see in our audit report segregated.
Allocated and unelected.
Right, right, allocated and unelected.
Your earmark, earmark for capital.
We don't really have a lot of reserves, but when we do, they, they show up in the balance sheet as, as a reserve.
I just wanted to make sure people didn't get confused. They wouldn't be looking for some line item in the budget that said, "Here's our capital reserve fund." It's going to be inside the general fund.
Correct. It's external to the operating budget. It's a separate fund.
But it is earmarked.
Yes, we have, we have some reserves called trust and agency accounts too.
Right, and those, those would be treated similar to that?
Yes.
Got it.
Parkland reserves, we have an economic development reserve account. This would be called capital reserve and it will show, you know, in the audited statements every year.
Okay.
Other comments?
I have just a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
I can just hop in here. So, with the tax cap being 2% or the rate of inflation, whatever's less, what happens in the environment of two years from now, we have an inflation rate of 2.5%, 3.5%? What impact does that have for us?
2% tax cap.
Right. Oh, okay, that's not...
Because right now, it's 1.1%.
Back it up. So, so say, my, I guess my, my question is, you're right, I did my math right.
Yeah.
If we have a higher trending inflation rate, do you, do you see that becoming, switching around lesser of tax cap or inflation, turning into tax cap instead of inflation? And what impact would that have on us?
Well, yeah.
If any.
It would be a substantial impact on us because all of our operating expenses are going to be inflated then. And, but also on the flip side, you know, our investments will be worth a little more too. We're getting nothing on our invested dollars, which has been very catastrophic. You know, so there's, it's the good and the bad. Our inflationary concerns as a local government really deal with our capacity to borrow money and, and our ability to invest. So, we think, we see inflationary trending, you know, occurring in the next, you know...
X.
It's down the road. I mean, the, the yield curves have been pretty consistent, but...
But did we model for this budget? Do you guys remember?
Well...
As an investment return?
No, as an inflation rate.
It depends on, it depends on the expense, you know, I mean, the, the problem that we're having is that there is really little inflation in, in the cost of goods that we acquire.
Right.
You know, labor is pretty flat.
Right, it's fairly fixed.
And that's 75% of our budget, you know?
Right.
So, we don't, we don't see those things escalating like they were escalating because we don't see the cost of goods in our urban area being, you know, overly inflated. But our fringes are escalating. You know, the cost of health insurance, the cost of liability insurance, the cost of work with compensation, the things that we buy really aren't. So, you know, we, we're, we're able to live within, you know, our means right now and deal, in dealing with this, you know, 1, 1.5%, you know, attractive levy.
Well, it's a little deciduous, right? Because you're going to have a rising inflation rate, which will bring it closer to that 2% threshold, which theoretically gives the board, I guess, more room to maneuver in one way, but it kind of gets taken away on the other side because...
Right.
You've got expenses that have gone up. And I also think it plays a little bit of a role in our planning here for future debt. You know, how do we work our expectations into future bond issues? Because that will play a role in whether or not we try to do more things maybe earlier, knowing that down the road, a year or two, it may be more expensive to accomplish.
Well, I, I think we had, we had a very good discussion about bringing in our fiscal advisor to talk about what we see as our long-term capital needs. I mean, we're probably looking with, with the improvements that we want to do from a point of view of infrastructure. We talked about the water main.
Right.
We talked about some of these roadway improvements in different areas of the village. village. I would suggest, you're probably in the 2 to $2.5 million range again.
Right.
You know, for a bond. And that's okay. We can absorb that. We're in a position to be able to do that, but the question is when.
Right, exactly.
We're not in a position to undertake all that work right now.
Right. And it's got to be ready, right? If I remember right, it's got to be shovel-ready before we can bond it?
Correct, yeah. We have to use it within 18 months of borrowing. We can't arbitrage the money. We'd get into big trouble with that.
And all of that just underscores the fundamental fraud of the 2 percent tax cap, which, you know, implies that the cost of running a small government can reasonably be maintained at 2 percent or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower, going forward into the future in an environment where the state itself sets the template in many cases, at least in terms of precedent, for labor contracts with our unionized workers and the like, with frequent circumstances that the increases are 2 percent or above, even at a time when the tax cap, because of inflation, is less than 1 percent. So, in an environment where healthcare costs, pension costs, and employee salaries are all likely rising faster than the tax cap in a business that is, what, 70 percent human cost, just get out your calendar and choose the date when it all crashes. You know, I think I can say with confidence that this community has weathered that quite well so far, and clearly the tax cap provided some fiscal discipline to everyone, as well as some leverage in some expenses to try to keep them under control. But until and unless what's asked of us by the state for pension contributions and what's asked of us for healthcare, et cetera, really reflects the restrictions the state has created, it just tightens the noose every year. There are plenty of communities with less fiscal strength than ours who are simply kicking the can down the road on infrastructure improvements that are essential. And so, I won't go off onto my Albany rant. It's an event for another day, but-
Thank you.
What has happened here is there are all kinds of circumstances where a community like us with sound management identifies things we need to spend money on, and yet if we were to spend money on a major water improvement, for example, it has an impact on the tax cap, and in many cases, we can't do it. You go to the state and say, "Okay, we're trying to maintain infrastructure in the way it ought to be done, just like you asked us to, but you've created some constraints that make it impossible for us to do that." And frequently, the response is, "Oh, don't worry. We've got, you know, $5 billion in water funds that we're putting in the state budget, and you're free to spend hours and hours and hours and hours and hours coming up with these grant applications that you have a god knows what percent chance of getting. And if we're fortunate enough in getting them, somebody shows up from Albany with a six-foot check and a photographer." So, let us run this place soundly. So, brief rant, sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted some clarification around that. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. You're welcome.
I have a very broad question, which is, could you talk a little bit more about the process of forecasting? I know you said that it would take days to really get into that, but, I mean, you know, intuitively, I can guess that, say, snow removal, for instance, is harder to forecast than some other things. But could you talk a little bit about which areas of the budget are easier to forecast than others and just give a bit of an overview?
Yeah, I can. And thank you, I can. Things that we consider elastic revenues are where the problems are. Sales tax revenue, we get over $1 million in sharing sales tax revenue from the county. But if there's economic indicators that show that, you know, the retail sectors are contracting, that's a concern for us. We have to watch that because, you know, a million dollars is a considerable amount of money for us to rely on. The other thing is that that source is not guaranteed. That's, the origin of that sales tax is an agreement the county made with all of its municipalities many years ago that can sunset, and it does sunset on occasion, and we need the county legislature to reenact it. So it's a concern because, you know, there are always other things that may arise in a political arena that could be catastrophic for us and affect our budget. So there are those types of them. Water rents are a very difficult thing to forecast. How much money can come in from the water fund? Sometimes we are subjected to drought restrictions put on us by the City of New York, which is the supplier of our raw water source. If the city's in drought conditions, then we have to then impose higher water rents. And what typically happens is that people will conserve water. We actually have to compel them to conserve water, and that can throw the budget and really help us scale there. So we do historical averages, you know, but we actually look at too, whatever we can with respect to, you know, things that we think are trending for those particular types of things. We'd have to look at the water fund very frequently if we're in a drought situation, and we'd have to come back to the board to say, "We need to do something quickly because it can go downhill pretty fast." Real property taxes is not a concern for us, you know, because we have all sorts of opportunities to collect taxes. So, because our budget is, our general fund budget operates with 80 percent of that revenue almost guaranteed, you know, we don't have a great deal of concern about funding those operations. And since we carry fund balance in an amount that can absorb anything that may not hold true with respect to other revenues, we're in a pretty good shape with, we're in pretty good shape with meeting our operating budgets. But that being said, you know, the forecasting involves estimating insurance expenses. None of those numbers are available to us at the time of the budget. We put our renewals in probably March or April for general liability, police, public officials liability, insurance quotes, automobile coverage, our package policies, umbrellas, and those are all subject to our experiences, our modification ratings, as well as whatever the market is doing. So, we estimate what we think are going to be our premiums for those things. Health insurance, I don't think we get that number until after the budget's adopted. What we think is trending with respect to healthcare, we get from the state some guidance which suggests best estimate, worst estimate, you know, and they really put it in those types of terms. But we're looking at an 8 percent inflationary trend in health insurance. That's significant. And if we're wrong about that, that's a big number either way, you know? It's a lot to raise in taxes to be able to meet that budget over $4 million for healthcare. And at an 8 percent, you know, inflationary trend, it's pretty high. But we have to put that in. So, retirement system's another estimate. That is contingent upon a whole bunch of things going on in Albany with the investments of those funds. And we do get some indication from the State Controller, typically around December, of what the rates will be for the upcoming year. And they're never accurate. They're never accurate. So we put in what they suggest will be our contributions, and they're just never there. They're usually high on one end, maybe high on the police, low on the non-police units or vice versa. So, that gives us a great deal of angst because those numbers are huge, and if they don't come in right, we are scrambling, you know, to find money in the other areas of the budget. So, you know, those are some of the bigger things. Mary, you have anything that we should?
About money, future.
Yeah, and investments, you know, I'm always picking on Mary to be a little less conservative on the interest we earn on our cash. We have, you know, significant cash flow on occasion with money coming in at different times of the year from bond proceeds or just from tax collections and the water bills. But, you know, we're not earning money on our money. It's just nobody is. So, you know, that's a little disappointing, but that's something else.
Well, and we're very limited in what we can do with the money.
I was just going to say, we're restricted in what we can do.
Oh, yeah. No, no, that's absolutely true.
Not investing in hedge funds.
No, we cannot. No, we cannot, you know, and even if we could, we would not. So, yes, we are, we have only a few instruments we could invest in, but years ago, we were getting 4, 5 percent. That was pretty nice.
Sure.
You know, now we're getting less than 1. So, that's not so nice. And then interest rates generally. You know, we'll keep an eye on our opportunity to refinance debt. If we have those opportunities, we take those opportunities. So, that's kind of where we are. I mean, the hardest things to predict are, you know, the situations involving the water rents and some of the taxes that are coming from other sources that, in the aggregate, are substantial for our budget, but we're not in control of them. Does that make sense?
Thanks, yes, that's helpful.
Can I just do a follow-up question to something you raised that was also part of your presentation, was, you know, the debate that's swirling around the Affordable Care Act. Was there any input from some of the consultants that we're using back when this came up on what we might be looking at? Has anybody actually started trying to put numbers to this, or is everybody kind of waiting to see what happens? I mean, I know it didn't go through, so no one really knows what it's going to look like, but what kind of delta could we be looking at there? If we go back, it's the Cadillac.
We did have, we didn't pay our consultants to do an estimate of what we would be subjected to from a Cadillac tax point of view, but we had, other communities had done that. And I'm thinking, we were looking at penalties because of the benefit-
The threshold, we were over the threshold, right?
We were at or above this threshold.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think we could have been looking at expenses, we're in the $35,000, $45,000 range perhaps? Does that sound about right?
Easy.
In addition to our premiums, just for having a plan that was better than the average plan that would be offered through the exchange, you know?
All of that was delayed again, so the chatter's going away.
Some communities were looking at $100,000 in excess.
Sure.
The premiums they would have to pay into the exchange because their plan was better than others.
Right.
It's just, it's kind of like what they're doing in baseball.
So that's a thing we have your eye on for the year ahead? I mean, that's, who knows where that goes?
I was going to say, that's a dartboard, I think, as I voiced about.
I know, I do too, but it's, when you're speaking about projections with-
I have to be honest with you, we just have to deal with it through, you know, through our operating reserves.
Yeah.
We don't want to budget for those types of things.
Oh, no, no, I'm not looking for a line.
Yeah, because-
I'm just like, is it a thing that you're worried about, thinking about? It's obviously, it's on the radar. What it ends up looking like, who knows?
I'm more concerned about sursiaries. I mean, they're, you know, they come out of left field seven years down the road. You know what I'm saying? They just don't happen in the year that they're filed.
Right.
You know, they have that lag effect.
Have a tail.
There'll be a board sitting here going, "We didn't know that was out there for the last six years."
Right.
And then that's what happens, you know, and some of those can be very substantial, hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax refunds.
Right.
And, you know, we have to be able to think about, you know, where that, you know, impact would hit and how to manage it.
And do villages typically reserve for that kind of thing, like a capital reserve fund or not? Is it premature to do that?
You can, you can set up a reserve.[1631.41]